And certification of quorum.
Pastor Simpson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend. Mayor Skipworth.
Here.
Councilmember Brantley.
Here.
Councilmember Schick.
Here.
Councilmember Linton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. If you would please rise and join us for the invocation. Pastor Simpson, could you leave us, please?
Let us pray. Oh, Lord our God, how excellent is your name. From the rising of the sun to the going down of the same, your name is great and greatly to be praised. Every good and perfect gift comes from you. Lord God, we thank you for this day, for getting us up, starting us on our way. We come before you asking your blessing upon this meeting, your blessing upon the citizens of this city, this county, this state, and this nation. Allow this to be an effective and efficient meeting. In your name we pray. Amen.
If you please join me for the pledges. First, United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you. All right, we have some special stuff this evening. First off, to item 4A, we have the Silvernagle Elementary School Choir Performance. So. Do we need to move the podium?
We can go right.
Okay. Yeah, please invite the parents in.
Thank you so much for having us. This is half of the Silvernagle Sound Choir at Silvernagle Elementary in Dickinson ISD. We usually have forty-five kids. Tonight, we're down to twenty-three. The flu has hit us pretty hard the last couple of days. But we have forty-five second and third graders. This is their third performance in the last two weeks. They have one more on Thursday. We are so excited to be here. Thank you for having us. Our first selection is called Santa is the Man. It's a little We Will Rock You-ish. And then we will finish with a medley of Jingle Bells up on the housetop and we wish you Merry Christmas. This is Silvernagle Sound.
Santa's a man, he's got a plan. He's the biggest man, it's coming out Christmas. Santa's a man, he's got a plan. He's the biggest man, it's coming out Christmas. A big man, he's small but he's got to be good. He loves all the kids in the neighborhood. He's saying he's somebody totally cool. He knows what's happening, he's no fool. Santa's a man, he's got a plan. He's the biggest man, it's coming out Christmas. Santa's a man, he's got a plan. He's the biggest man, it's coming out Christmas. A big man, he's flying all around the world. He calls on duty for the boys and girls. He's saying he's somebody totally cool. He calls his children through the night. I've been through so good, so good. I've been through so good, so good. Santa's a man, he's got a plan. He's the biggest man, it's coming out Christmas. Santa's a man, he's got a plan. He's the biggest man, it's coming out Christmas. Santa's a man, Santa's a man. Santa's a man, Santa's a man. Santa's the man out of Christmas. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Up on the housetop, it used to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Up on the housetop, it used to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Up on the housetop, it used to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Up on the housetop, it used to ride in a one-horse open sleigh.
I just skipped ahead the whole song. Sorry, y'all. It's to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. One, two, three. There we go.
Up on the housetop, reindeer call. I'm gonna do an old Santa Claus. Down through the chimney, lots of toys. Up on the little ones, Christmas joy. Ho, 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 who let it go? Ho, 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 who let it go? Up on the housetop, click, click, click. Down through the chimney, little singing.
Feel free to sing along. We wish you a Merry Christmas.
We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you so much for having us. We're gonna take a picture. All right, everybody. Put your hands down. Smile pretty. Santa's watching. One, two, three. And a big thank you to Councilwoman Simpson, who designed our shirts. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Y'all were absolutely awesome. Thank you. It was awesome. Thanks. We'll give everybody a second to file out. All right. Next up, we have something else, a little more fun than some of our usual fare. Item 4B, the KE Little Elementary Art Contest. Are they out in the... Oh, they're in here. Okay. Okay. Okay, no worries. Yeah, come on up. Come on up, Charles.
Good afternoon, evening, everyone. My name is Charles Marcus. I'm from the Dickinson Music Enrichment Center.
You sure do. Speaking of might, we have people listening on outside, so they can hear you.
So they can hear me. All right. From the Dickinson Music Enrichment Center. And we are here tonight. Recently, I was invited over to KE Little for their career day. So I brought over a few instruments and we created a coloring book that said Band is Cool. And afterwards, me and Casey got together and decided we would have a school-wide coloring art contest. And as a result of that contest, there were two-hundred-and-twenty entries from the school. And we had to judge all those entries. And me and some of my fellow employees down at Leek City judged the last fifteen to come up with the three finalists, school overall, who won the contest. And we have two of those winners here tonight. We have this young gentleman. His name?
Jeremy Ramirez.
Yes, Jeremy Ramirez. Jeremy's in first grade. And he won first place overall of the entire school.
And this is Paisley LaCorne. She's in third grade. And she got third place overall. So we are so extremely proud of all of our participants. Like Mr. Marcus was saying, there were about two-hundred-and-twenty entries total, which is about half of our school at KE Little. And so we're so excited that y'all allowed us to come tonight so that our grand prize champion could get the awards from the mayor.
I am... Oh, my man, the mayor. How about that? This is for first place.
All right.
And for Mr. Jeremy Trow. And it says Grand Champion. I love Grand Champion. That just means so much.
Congratulations. Here we go. I've never done a medal.
And he also gets a nice, big, giant box of crayons. Yes, yes. This is for Paisley, our second runner-up. She got third place. And Paisley's... Paisley's in first grade, too.
Third grade.
Third grade.
All right. Congratulations, Paisley. There you go. There you go.
And don't mark up your mom's wall with those. And we have one medal left for our first runner-up, which was Jasmine Cho.
Also in first grade.
Also in first grade. So our first graders. And these kids, I think they come from... Two of them came from the same classroom.
Yeah, Ms. Tuttle.
Ms. Tuttle, yes. Ms. Tuttle's kids kind of showed out on everybody, even though they're first graders. And the final deliberation and results are on our website, tdnc.org. If you want to take a look at these folks, these young ladies, young kids, their artwork. And they will also be displayed at our library after next week. And they'll be displayed at the county library, the Evelyn Meadler Library. Because, you know, Bay City doesn't have their... Bay Cliff.
Bay Cliff doesn't have it.
Doesn't have their own library. So those two librarians graciously allowed us to display their artwork in their library. And I also want to just reiterate to everyone that these teachers and administrators at KE Little, this thing took place in like a week. She said we can get this together. I expect to hear from her two or three weeks later. But it was several, a couple of days later, and it had two-hundred-and-twenty entries for me to try to scan in and organize and database and judge. So I want to put a huge thanks to the teachers and administrators. I can go on and on and thank the mayor and the librarians and everybody, but I think the mayor gets another pat on the back for people hiding in bushes for him. I think I'll let that go. Just one huge, big applause for these kids because they're...
And thank you to everybody. You, everyone that's involved with this. So they got this on. I know this is a special film.
Yes, we hope to continue.
Yes, we're gonna do this. Many years to come, yes.
Awesome.
All right. Thanks a lot, mayor.
Do you want me in the picture?
Yes.
Remember, the Dickinson Music Enrichment Center, if the kids want to learn their music, you do it all free.
All right. We'll move on to item five, announcements and presentations. Announcements concerning items of community interest. No action will be taken or discussed. Councilmember comments regarding items of community interest in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.0415. Item 5A, council comments. Begin with Councilman Linton.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to... Let me pull this up real quick. First of all, I'd like to apologize for missing the last council meeting. That was the first one I ever missed. I got called to work. And they're the ones who pay the bills. So my apologies. I went on a Public Works tour with Public Works Department Head, Alexis Santiago, on the 26th of October. We went all around the town to look at the various projects that were ongoing and some of the future projects. I've asked him to do that quarterly so I can kind of keep up on everything. It's a good visual mnemonic device to remember what's going on and where and how much is being spent. We went to Ray Holbert Park, Caroline Street Project, the Oak Park Street Culver Cleanup is a future project. Central Street Project is also a future project. And the California Street Project. And we also went by West Gum to look at Part One of that project that had been completed. And Part Two will be completed, and it's... The date is to be determined. And the last one we looked at was Hughes Road. Just a few more things. Also, I attended the Veterans Day Parade and Luncheon at the VFW, Festival of Lights. Went out there, volunteered, and built a ramp and asked Councilmember Townsend to not criticize my carpentry skills too much. I'm much better with a slide rule than I am with a drill, but I did the best I could. Knights of Columbus Fish Fry. I went to... Also attended the Dickinson Police Department Blue Santa Toy Drive when they were out at Gators. Chamber of Commerce Farmer's Market stopped by and also Dickinson Rotary Club Christmas Parade. Wasn't able to attend, but I heard that it went off very well. So congratulations to them. Wanted to mention real quick... And Anna, could you pull up that image? Wanted to mention, these were the four remaining dogs when I adopted a dog this past summer. And these were the four of the seven, I believe, that I saw that didn't make the cut. So these are... These four dogs are still at the shelter. They're great dogs. So please take special... Go out to the shelter and adopt a animal. And if you can, show special consideration to these four animals to help me deal with my residual guilt of not adopting all of them. But I'm not going to have six dogs at the house. Currently, the shelter status is there's ninety-five dogs, seventy-eight on-site, seventeen in a foster home or trial adoption. And the capacity is fifty. So we're at one-hundred-and-ninety percent capacity with dogs, cats. Current, we have fifty, twenty-eight on-site, twenty-two in a foster home or trial adoption with a forty cat capacity. And we're one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent capacity. Also, the people at the shelter, Nina wanted me to mention, they are partnered... They have partnered with Distel, the vacuum cleaner manufacturer, and have been promoting the Empty the Shelters campaign, which means we're able to offer twenty-dollar adoption fees. This will reimburse the shelter thirty dollars for every cat adopted and fifty dollars for every dog adopted. So far, we've had twelve adoptions. This program is running in conjunction with our Home for the Holidays campaign. So please go out there and do what you can and tell your friends. Also, I wanted to remind everybody, please be part of the solution and stay new to your pets. One last thing with the shelter. Congratulations to Nina Baker for being awarded the example of excellence by her fellow department heads at the Christmas party this past week. I had asked the city finance director, Harrison Nicholson, for a list of food industry taxpayers in the city of Dickinson. I did this so that the city had a list of restaurants it could use when requiring those services and allows us to support local businesses. I sent that to Anna, and hopefully that will help in the future whenever the city has that need. Also, I had spoken to Theo, our city manager, Theo Melanson, about completion of the approximately a hundred feet of sidewalk at the northeast and southeast corners of FM 517 and Highway 3. When they completed all the sidewalks down 517, they did not connect those two corners to the existing sidewalks. And so I'll be following up on that and see if we can get that taken care of pretty soon. Two more things. Next Thursday, December 21st, 23rd, at 6:00 PM, Gators will be having the Nightmare Before Christmas. It's a movie-themed dinner event with a portion of the proceeds of ticket sales donated to GCEA. GCEA is Gulf Coast Epilepsy Alliance. And I have a special connection to them, a personal connection to members of my family with epilepsy. One in ten may have a seizure in his or her lifetime, and one in twenty-six will be diagnosed with epilepsy. There's also a stigma assigned to this... To this condition. And it's unfortunate. But I'm doing what I can to help the organization and minimize that stigma. You can check out their website at gceatx.org. And the last thing I have is congratulations to the International Space Station Program. On December 6, 1998, astronauts connected the Zera and Unity Modules. This was the start of the international human collaboration and space exploration. Congratulations to everyone who has been and is still part of the ISS program. I started at NASA back in 1998, working on the Space Station Program, training the astronauts over in Building Five South. And then went elsewhere and eventually came back. And I'm now part of the Space Program... The Space Station Program again. So congratulations to all of us out there. And then also, I wanted to mention Merry Christmas. Hope everybody has a very safe and happy holiday season. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. And don't forget, the winter solstice is on December 21st. Thank you much.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Schick.
Thank y'all very much for coming tonight. It is very difficult to follow young kids singing. So no matter what we do out here, we're going to be playing second fiddle. This is my second chance to watch them sing. I'm just blown away that, at their age group, that they're able to perform like that. That was wonderful. Have some great parents behind those kiddos. I attended the Dickinson Employee Luncheon prior to Thanksgiving. Got to meet some employees I didn't even know that we had. And it was a wonderful event. Everybody helped out. I look forward to that for next year. I helped volunteer at the MI Lewis Pre-Thanksgiving Food Giveaway. We... It was very well attended. The line extended all the way down past Dairy Queen. We were able to help the majority of the people in line. Look forward to doing that again next year. It really shows a Dickinson spirit of all the people that donated to that, got out and worked it. It's just really heartwarming to watch that. I got nominated as Vice President of the Dickinson Bayou Watershed Committee. I'm very proud of that. We had our Dickinson Lighted Boat Parade, our fourth annual boat parade. It was very well attended with the number of boats. And it was even a higher attendance of the people that, from their backyard, the boat ramp and the Little League field came to watch it. Great Christmas spirit going on in our town. I do have to... We did give out awards for the Best Decorated and Most Spirited. The Best Decorated went to the Dickinson Bayou Ranch. I see that they're here tonight. I don't know how in the world y'all are gonna top yourself next year. That was a fabulous job. Most Spirited went to Jennifer Lawrence's group. And I was also able to help with the Rotary Christmas Parade. We had a great turnout. We had a fun... There were thousands of people watching this thing. I'm very glad that we have it back on 517. Look forward next year, making it bigger and better. And again, Dickinson Bayou Ranch took the prize on their float. Thank y'all very much and have a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilman Brantley.
Thanks to everybody that's here in attendance, everybody online. Thank you for being here. Couple of things this week. Thanks to Silvernagle Elementary and the choir. Fantastic job. Also, thanks to KE Little. Thanks for your participation in the art contest. And congratulations to the winners. Thank you very much. Kind of staying with the kids right now. Dickinson Girls Softball is registering. They're registering now through January the 31st. You can get more information on their Facebook page at Dickinson Girls Softball. Dickinson Little League is also registering, currently registering. They're registering now through January 24th. They... And you can get more information on that at Dickinson Youth Sports Little League on Facebook. So staff recognition this week. Wanted to recognize... I don't see her now, but Carrie Lynn Bashel, our Director of Human Resources, for the job that she's doing. Thank you, Carrie Lynn. And then I also wanted to recognize Chief Barison and the Police Department for the job that you guys are doing. You guys are doing an excellent job. Thank you for the way that you're supporting your community, the Blue Santa Program. And also, thank you very much for the support that you showed for the Dickinson Lighted Bayou Christmas Parade. Normally, I recognize just staff, but this week, I want to recognize a special volunteer or two special volunteers. Councilman Bill Schick and Ms. Galen Nizer. I know she's here somewhere. I can't see her. Thank you all very much for the work that you do to put on the Christmas Lighted Bayou... The Dickinson Bayou Lighted Christmas Boat Parade. This is the first year I was not able to attend due to some personal commitments. But you guys do a great job with that. So I wanted to recognize you and thank you for what you do with that, the boat parade. So thank you very much. With that, that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Townsend.
Welcome to everybody that's out tonight. I'm gonna keep mine real short. Just remember, Festival of Lights is running through the end of the year. They'll have buses this weekend. It should be the week of going into Christmas. And then after that, you can park in the park. And I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and be safe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Simpson.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Just like Bill was talking about with the Thanksgiving mobile distribution, MI Lewis actually hosts it every single month on the third Saturday of every month. You can come any month. And so I'm encouraging now to come on Saturday. The third Saturday of every month, MI Lewis will host a food distribution event. All you have to do, if you're seeking benefits, all you have to do is show up and register at the time of the event. It starts at 7:00 AM. If you'd like to volunteer to serve at the event, please arrive at 6:30 AM to help us serve some meals. Dickinson ISD Transportation Department and the Dickinson Food Nutrition Services Department are immediately hiring for bus drivers, bus monitors, and a bus mechanic. Food Nutrition Services Department is hiring substitutes, apprentices, and food service technicians. Check out dickinsonisd.org/jobs for more information and job listings. The Dickinson Youth Action Council did a service project last month. We created fifty mini yarn trees with the help of the Dickinson Public Library to include in this month's care package for senior citizens who receive deliveries from MI Lewis. The following week, the council volunteered and served at the November Mobile Distribution Event. Additionally, the DIAC also assisted the public library with a couple of Sundays ago. We had a great time speaking with families and kids whenever we hosted Santa and had a little bit of fun there, passing out some goodies and taking pictures of Santa. Also, just want to say Happy New Year to everybody. I want to give a special thank you to the city staff for all of their support this year. Merry Christmas to you and all of your families, to the citizens. I hope you have a happy holiday, no matter what holiday you celebrate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Councilman Simpson.
Thank you, mayor. Welcome, everybody, both in person and online. Glad to see everyone out. Thanks again, as well... To reiterate the comments before, the Silvernagle Elementary, KE Little... Thanks again, as to reiterate the comments before, to Silvernagle Elementary, K E Little, and the Dickinson Music and Richmond Center. Since the last meeting, the main thing I've been involved with has been Houston Gaucon Area Council. We're working on the twenty twenty-four budget and also because of the charter amendment that was passed in the City of Houston election, we are now renegotiating board composition. And I was informed at this last meeting, I'm now on that committee to handle some of the negotiation on what the Houston Gaucon Area Council Board is going to look like. Would also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a Happy Holidays as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I usually don't have many comments because y'all steal my thunder, but I have a couple of things. So last Friday, I went with the Dickinson I S D Foundation. Jenna, what is that event called? We're delivering those grant rewards?
So once a year, we do a teaching, innovative teaching grants awarding day. We call it a prize patrol. It's kind of like a publisher's clearinghouse style.
I couldn't remember the name you had. So I enjoyed going out on the prize patrol, awarding some teachers that had made some great grant proposals to receive some money from the foundation. I think they'll do great things with all of that. I was also pleased to be a part of the Christmas Parade also last week, to reiterate what Councilman Schick said. You know, there was a ton of people. I tried to pride myself on not running out of candy, and I did. My son does kind of throw a little too much, so if you're ever at those parades, look for my car because he goes a little, gets a little too generous. But it was a good time to see everybody out there and definitely enjoyed it. I also want to give Chief Bearzen a shout out. I know he's going to speak here in a moment, but I know recently we hired some new officers, and you know, it's been a real issue for a while. I know we've had some vacancies, and I think he's done a great job of working with some of the area police academies to help fill those vacancies. So I want to give him a preemptive shout out on that. So, all right, moving on to item five B, the city manager update. I'll turn it over to our city manager, Theo Melanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. First, we'll get started up with some staff updates. What you're going to see is on a periodic basis, usually each month we'll have a rotation of some departments that are going to be providing you guys some updates. It was something that was not a part of our routine in the past, but we want to try to get staff in front of here, then it gives y'all a chance to see the work they're doing, let them speak in their own words. And so with that, I'd like to start off with our Police Department and Chief Bearzen.
Yes, sir. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you an update on our recruiting efforts. I appreciate the accolades, but as much as I'd like to take credit for that, I am not the person doing heavy lifting. I would like to give credit to Sergeant Michael Montgomery that's hiding behind the Christmas tree back there like a good Marine will do. And then, I forgot, there's more of them. And then Carrie Lynn and her team and H R have done a stellar job. We have developed relationships with our local academies. When I started here, I know council really talked about the amount of vacancies we have. And I will tell you that what's put us in a great position to fill these vacancies is you all and the bold step that most of you took to put us in the position we are in now to where we are actually competitive with our competition in the area. You know, I attended the graduation last night for two of our new hires that will start on January the eighth at Alvin Community College, and it was certainly nice. And apparently, it's not something that's occurred here of late to where Dickinson Police Department was listed in the program as two of the cadets going to Dickinson Police Department. Apparently, that's been a while since that's been a thing at some of the academies. So I don't want to have vacancies, so I'm hoping it's not a thing we always have. But I started here back in June, and we had five vacancies and five vacancies in telecommunications. I've lost zero patrol personnel in the six months and five days I've been here. And of the five vacancies, come middle of February, we'll be down to one vacancy in patrol, and we're down to one vacancy in telecommunications. So like I said, I'd love to take credit for it. I have the privilege of leading the fine men and women of your police department, but the heavy lifting has actually been done by Sergeant Montgomery and Carrie Lynn Bashel and her staff. But I want to introduce before I leave our newest officer, and it's a nine-year veteran. So Cory, if you can come up here and step up with me. We're not going to make her speak. We were kind of messing with her at our Police Department Luncheon today. We were making her speak to you all, but she's a nine-year veteran. She has experience in municipal and county organizations. She brings a depth of experience. She has been a patrol sergeant, a county marshal, school resource officer, and a deputy constable. Like I stated, she's got training as a patrol sergeant, but she also has background in warrants, bailiff duties. She's been a field training officer. She's going to be an excellent asset for some of the junior staff that we have with the minor experience we have in our department now. So she's a nice veteran officer that's certainly highly qualified. She's also trained as a hostage and crisis negotiator, so that's an outstanding asset for our department. She's also done investigations in animal cruelty and child, or I'm sorry, animal cruelty and animal abuse cases in the state of Colorado. So I'm certainly honored that she chose us, and I know she's going to be a welcome addition to Dickinson Police Department and our community, and she lives here locally. So you don't have to say anything.
We're glad to have you on board. Thank you.
Next up, Alexis Santiago with Public Works, Public Works Director. Come on up.
Uh-oh, burning prop with you.
All right, so I'll start off with this. Y'all are well aware that we bought a sign printer machine going around the city. The old signs are going to be replaced with these signs here with our logo. They're all going to be six by thirty, and they should be easy to read.
Would you be gracious enough to show your audience behind you so they'll see what And those are being printed in-house, correctly?
In-house. They're going to, they've already started putting them out, but the goal is to start down Highway three and get all the way down five seventeen and start working inward from there. So, but in Public Works, in the past two weeks, our street sweeper has swept about ninety miles, and we've mowed seventy-five thousand four hundred and eight feet throughout the city. Our Fleet Maintenance Department since June has completed three hundred and thirty-seven repairs with twenty-five inspections. I'm still working on a cost savings to present to you guys to see what we're saving, bringing it in-house. Our contractors, I'm going to start with our street rehab with Forty-Fourth, Forty-Fifth, and Caroline. Center Point has finally made it out, relocated the gas line on Forty-Fourth that was in conflict, so Environmental will go ahead and continue the drainage work there and complete the concrete work on the street. Center Point has moved to Forty-Fifth and is going to relocate that gas line that was in conflict, and they will move over from there. Caroline Street, they're still working on punch list items, but because of the holidays, staff is kind of slow. So, but that's all I got. Yes, sir.
I know it's county, but are you going to put them on the county side of Highway three by any chance, them signs?
I will check with Lee Crowder to see if I can put them on the county portion.
I not see no good to anymore at night. It helps.
I'll try.
And please do let Lee know and see if we can work together on that.
Will do.
If you can't, that's fine. I just curious.
I'm sure he'll let me do it. Thank y'all.
Last, but certainly not least, we have our Community Development Director and Chief Building Official, Todd Sutko.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. So the two big items that we've been working on as of late is getting the ball rolling on this substandard building program and preparing for this C R S audit. So the slides behind you, they represent some properties that were demolished over a month ago. Currently, we have abatement orders to execute on twelve properties. Ten bids have been awarded. Once those vendor packets have been completed and the contractors register, we'll be able to start issuing permits within the next couple of weeks. We also have one that's awaiting a third bid and one that the property owner took, obtained a permit and demolished the property on their own. So that's what we have currently and in the future at the next, waiting to execute. We have five more that are later this month. Some of those are demolished and some of them are too. They've been granted an extension to rehabilitate the structures. So far as the C R S program, we're in the middle of our five-year cycle visit.
Hey, Todd, before you start, there are some people here that probably don't even know what the C R S program is.
Okay, I was going to explain.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to, when our five-year cycle visit for our C R S rating, which is what we maintain is to participate in National Flood Insurance Program. We're currently a Class Eight, which means we don't do just the bare minimum. We go above and beyond, and that affords property owners in Dickinson a ten percent discount on flood insurance premiums. We look to improve that to possibly Class Six, perhaps even a Class Five, which would be another ten to fifteen percent discount. That's pretty significant because eighty-five percent of the city's in the flood plan. So that's, should be wrapped up this month. We received, we went through our audit. We received the feedback, and we got to get them a couple more items. So it should be middle of next month. We should be completed with that. And business as usual, other than that.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you very much. Next up, Counsel, I have Louis Breedlove with Brooks Watson to give an update on some audits. And I think we're going to talk a little bit about the fiscal year twenty-one audit and a transition over from Belt Harris to Brooks Watson to kind of pick up where Belt Harris left off. And with that, Louis, I'm going to kind of let you update us and kind of give us where we need to be. And there'll be an action item later to amend our engagement letter, but thought it was proper here because we're kind of talking about three fiscal years, and this is the engagement is only the one year, so if you don't mind, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you for having me. Yes, speaking to Theo and I've met previously with Mayor when you all selected us as the auditors for twenty twenty-two fiscal year with the intention of twenty-one wrapping up. So a couple of weeks ago, we chatted. There's been some changes in the situation on the twenty-one audit. So we are willing to jump in and take over where the prior auditor has left off. There will be, speaking with the staff and Finance Director, there's a lot of work that's already been prepared and provided for the prior auditor, so a lot of that's ready to go. We've been happy with the activity. We've been in the communication on our side with the Finance Director and their team. They've been very responsive, providing everything we've requested so far, and there's a large list of items we've requested that they've been actively uploading to our file, and so we're seeing those things trickling in. And so within the first couple of days, I had a mass of files pretty quickly. So just based on the activities so far, we're pretty satisfied and happy with the activity and the support that we're seeing from the Finance Department. Just giving you a tentative timeline, we're just speaking on twenty-one. Our plan was to start twenty twenty-two's audit. You know, it kept on getting pushed, but we had planned to start that in the summer. And you know, being where we are now, our plan was to start the twenty-two audit in March, towards the end of March. It's based on right now, we're in the middle of that busy season, and that's where our schedule would allow it to kind of pick up with the anticipation of the twenty-one audit being completed. Now, we would start that twenty-one audit at the end of March. The goal would be to have that completed within, in the spring, then roll straight into twenty twenty-two's audit, give them a little bit of time for any audit adjustments that may be necessary to get entered and then be able to pick right back up into that twenty-two audit. The goal for that one would be to have that issued in the summer and then roll into twenty-three and have that done hopefully before the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, so sometime in the fall, to where we would be on track, caught up, and be able to plan on that twenty twenty-four audit being completed in that normal typical timeline for our city. So that's the plan for the timeline. That could fluctuate some just depending on, you know, once we're in the details, but just based on what we're seeing so far, we see no reason why it shouldn't be pretty close to that expected timeline.
To give a little background to everyone here is just to say, is that so the fiscal year twenty-one audit, the reason why Mr. Breedlove is saying he had to kind of push his schedule back is you kind of can't start a fiscal year twenty-two audit without the fiscal year twenty-one audit. You don't have those beginning numbers to work with for the twenty-two audit. So they've been gracious enough to keep moving their schedule back. Recently, we were informed that our prior auditor was going to be, they're going into their busy season, and unfortunately, they just were not going to be able to even pick up the F Y twenty-one audit and really work on it again until April of twenty twenty-four, which of course that would push them back because there was actually not even a date given as to when they would actually finish that audit. It was just they were just going to pick up where they left off. It was at that point, you know, I reached out thankfully to Louis and said, you know, this timeline isn't working for the City of Dickinson. We got to get these audits done. And if you're already waiting on the F Y twenty-one audit, why don't you just go ahead and take the fiscal year twenty-one audit, get it done so you can get into twenty-two and twenty-three, and let's get this done with. So that's kind of how we're here today. I hope that somemates kind of our conversation we had, at least my, you know, portion of that conversation. And so I'm very thankful that Brooks Watson is willing to kind of pick that up and grab it so that, you know, they can kind of get to business on twenty-two and twenty-three from the original engagement, so.
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll have an action item a little bit later.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I believe, just for your edification, guys, I did put in, and then we'll be, you know, I'll be done, budget update from, you should have in your, you know, available to you, the Gaucon County Emergency Communication District Budget. That's totally F Y I. There's no action to take on just for you to have it. Certain entities, you'll see this come and go sometimes like CAD and some of the others, that by state law, they are required to submit their budget to each entity, you know, not even it has to be presented at a council meeting or anything. They just have to be able to say, hey, we mailed that budget to them, but this is for your F Y I, and it meets their state statutory requirement. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, public comments. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time, lasting not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature or may address a specific agenda item and should be addressed, directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks or using vulgar or profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate. Now, we have a number of people signed up for like a special item, but I think you actually had a general comment. So we'll, if I'm wrong, if I call your name, just let me know. But we did have, we did have Wally Dietz sign up on the general comment forum. So if you please come up and give us your name and your address.
Yeah, I'm Wally Dietz, fifty-two oh one, Diesel Drive, Dickinson. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Hope you have a safe and prosperous holiday. I have a bit of community news that I'd like to share. As of this morning, there's petitions circulating throughout the community to recall the mayor position, and I just wanted to inform the public and council. If anybody on council or the public is wanting to sign that petition, I have a copy here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to our next speaker, Chad Rankin.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Chad Rankin, forty-one thirty-six, Heath Bayou Mesa Circle, Dixon seven seven five three nine. I've had the unique privilege and honor to serve this community in various capacities as a pastor of several of our citizens, as a co-founder of Dixon Select Gators with Mr. Archie Williams to provide community basketball for our community. And I've also served on the E D C Board for several years with now Councilman Scheck and Councilman Brantley. I've also served alongside with Theo, our city manager, and then I've served also in the community with Councilman Simpson. I've also been an alternate for the committee standards and building and standards committee. And so I'm keenly aware of the political system here in Dickinson and how it works. And yet I stand here today embarrassed for our city, sickened by the dark. And yet I stand here today, um, embarrassed for our city, sickened by the dark and evil rhetoric on social media about our city and about our elected officials and some of our city employees. I'm frustrated because a small group of people, in my opinion, who will just do just about anything to maintain power on and to go as far as to disregard the will of the people. I say the will of the people because the people voted back in May in 2023 for the lawful reelected of Mayor Skipworth by 52%. And while I believe the tasks and personal tasks of courage, it's going to take courage and commitment for all of you to run for any office and get elected here within any local branch like our city of Dickinson, mainly because nobody tells you of the fine print within leadership that you're going to always expect criticism. And so I know that from my own vocation and calling as a pastor, and so I want to thank you for your service, all of you, for the city of Dickinson. I realize it's not easy to be an elected official, but also believe that the political and even personal attacks that have led to the recall of Mayor Skipworth is also an attack upon our democracy. I say this because me and others within our community exercise our right to vote for Mayor Skipworth to be our mayor, and he won. And now this effort is to try to recall mayor, and I take it also as an attack upon me and other voices and votes that were lawfully cast and counted to put this mayor and some of you on this council to serve the position of being servants to our community. And therefore I want to publicly acknowledge and stand with Mayor Skipworth. I want to publicly denounce the actions of those who are using intimidation and disinformation to.
Your three minutes is, is, uh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. Next we have Reggie Taylor.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Reggie Taylor. I, uh, live on 2305 28th Street, Dickinson, Texas. And, um, I too, I, um, feel the same way as Pastor Rankin done, uh, does. I, uh, first, uh, met Mayor Skipworth, um, when he was campaigning for city council. And, um, Mayor Skipworth was one of the first ones that I have ever seen, uh, besides a few that comes out and just see what the neighborhood, uh, needs. I too believe that this, this is a personal attack against him and not for the job that he's doing, but just for hateful people uh, that's trying to spoil it for what we've already put in place. I don't know what, uh, they have to gain from this or what they're trying to do, but it makes no sense because the rhetoric that is going around here now, it makes, uh, no better sense. And for a petition to be signed after we've already cast our votes of who we wanted to elect and what we, what we want to see done in this community as a whole, not for just one side of the city, but for everybody in the community. So I feel like that it is time to come together and stop the bickering, stop messing around, and let's do this work together. Because it's not going to stop because these hateful people are just pressing on. So petitions don't mean anything. I mean, they, they really don't. You're just trying to just make something up. I mean, there's no proof of what you're claiming on this internet, on Facebook that you've come up with. Until you can provide some proof to us, then it's, it's invalid, totally invalid. So please stop. I mean, it's, it's a personal attack. I grew up here as a little boy, growing up in this neighborhood. And he's one of the few that has come out to see what the actual problems are. But some people don't like that. I don't know why. Maybe it's not all for them. But it needs to be, it needs to happen and we just need to come together as a, as a whole community and take control of this and let the mayor do his job while he can, while he's in office. And everybody needs to get on board because that's what we're here for. We're not here to chatter city apart. We're here to build it up. That's what we're here to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up we have Patrick Davis.
My name is Patrick Davis. I live at 146 Eastern Glen. I got a visit from a guy today that came to my doorstep and was trying to get me to sign a petition. I have a video of him. He's from Mississippi. He asked me for a voter's registration. He asked me for no ID. I could have been anybody. He gave me the pen and said, hey, sign it. What am I signing? And then I asked him, what's he on the petition board? One of the five members. He told me, yes. I have the full video. And if you want to see it, I got it. And I want it on public record for everyone to see it, that these guys are from other cities trying to get citizens of Dixon to sign something that they know nothing about. Most of these guys don't even know Skipworth. This guy was from Mississippi, knocking on my doorstep, trying to get me to sign a petition. We need to stop the rhetoric. This is not fair to Skipworth or not any of you guys. If you had somebody come from another city trying to get you to stop a vote that they know nothing about and they not even doing it the legal way, then I asking for a voter registration. I could be anybody. How do you know that's my address? I could be visiting this person. I just went to the door. So these guys, Wally Dietz, is trying to get everybody to sign their petition. They need to stop it and do it the legal way. If you want to do it the legal way, do it the legal way. Who's funded this project? Who's funding the project? These guys are saying they make $20 an hour. It's all on video and I will give to whoever needs it and it needs to stop. That's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. Next up we have Louis Little.
Yes, I am Louis Little, pastor of Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church here in Dickinson. Everything has been said that I wanted to say. Most of you I know, you newcomers I don't know. Born and raised here, I'm the first black player to walk on the field here in Dickinson as a Gator. From the sixties, I saw, lived and had to endure some stupid stuff and it affected me. I don't want to see that stupid stuff in 2023. You're not Republicans, you're not Democrats, you're Dickinson. You need to stand up for Dickinson. No one's going to be on the same page on every item. And if it's not your cup of tea, you don't throw, go take your marbles and go home. You make it work. That's why you're elected officials, because you are supposed to represent Dickinson in unity, not separation, not division. And I'm sad to hear that somebody has to go outside of Dickinson to stir up mud in our community. It doesn't speak well for us. What I really need from y'all, every Friday night, I hear all these folk shouting, go Gator, go. And it don't matter what race they are, no matter how small or how tall, even little babies. What I'd like to see right here, all of you just start shouting, go Dickinson, go. Not separation, unification. Separation didn't get us where we are today, gang. Uh, we'd still be separated by the nation, separated by the races. I came from the all-black school and I came to the predominantly white school and I saw for myself where the taxes were going. At Dunbar, we were playing football with cleats missing in the shoes. When I got over to Dickinson High School, they had two-tone blue and white shoes for the game. Brand new practice shoes. When I got there as a sophomore and I made diversity and they gave me my brand new practice shoes and they got muddy. I was in there cleaning them up and the trainers went, got the coach. He said, Mr. Little's cleaning his practice shoes. They were game shoes to me from where I came from. We can't have that kind of spending anymore. Uh, anything on the north side of Deeks Road ought to be treated like the south side of Deeks Road. And while I'm on the street, uh, I'm not gonna call this racist. It just happened to be everything that's being challenged is coming from the north side of Deeks Road. That man's been challenged. Holmes has been challenged.
Sorry, your, your three minutes, your three minutes is up.
Three minutes are up. Stop the challenge and come together.
Next up we have, uh, Mr. Cunningham.
Call has been established, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman. I agree. So let, let me give y'all what the Lord showed me this morning, okay? He knew everybody was going to be here tonight. So listen, listen what he gave me. I've been in Dickinson 83, been pastoring 3018 Avenue F, the corner, New Jerusalem Baptist Church for 30 years. My name is Roderick Cunningham. I live at 2112 Greenlee Lane. Come by and visit me anytime. Supper's around, around. He gave me three scriptures. All of us in here that go to church, you tend church, you there every Sunday, amen. You love the Lord. He heard your cry, right? Check this out. Mark 325, it says, "A divided house. If a house be divided against itself, it cannot stand." How can Dickinson stand divided? That don't even make sense. That's the Bible now. All Scripture gives us rights to God. If God said this and he used guys to write this, if we gonna live what God says, watch this. Acts 1726, God made of one blood, every ethnic group to live all on the face of earth. That's all of us in here. That's all of us in Dickinson. How in the world are we gonna say we love God and we divided? That don't even make sense. Dickinson, Dickinson. Second Corinthians 517 says, I mean, Second Corinthians 510 says, "We all must stand before the judgment seat of Christ to give an account of the deeds done in the body, whether it be good or bad." My mom and dad said, "You can get by, but you don't get away." I just, I just had to, he let me live to, tonight to say that to everybody in here. And you say it's being broadcasted, it's, it's being, I hope the whole world hear it. You say you love God, you believe in God. How can you love men you see every day and you can't love God? Or you say you love God who you haven't seen and you love, you see people every day and you can't get along? That don't even make sense, y'all. From the White House to Dickinson City Hall, Dickinson, as that old saying say, can't we all just get along?
All right. Next up we have Skylar Cornelius.
Hello, I'm Skylar Witton Cornelius. We live at 12900 Second Street, Dickinson Bayou Ranch. We moved here six years ago and Harvey happened. We all went through COVID. After that, just in the last couple of years, we've gotten involved with a lot of the organizations and things that are great about Dickinson. Um, I've talked to several of you about positive vibes in Dickinson, and I don't want to be involved in anything that's not positive. And you guys, I really feel sorry for you, the scrutiny that everyone puts you through. It's funny whenever you see on the social media platforms how big everyone can be and talk bad about Dickinson City Council and Sean, Mayor Skipworth. But whenever you come up here and actually have a chance to be involved in the community, you can see that Dickinson is a great place. I agree with everything that the guys were saying about coming together and work on solutions versus challenging what's already been decided in May and rehashing something that, at the end of the day, what are we going to gain? Are we going to spend time, money, effort on something that, why can't we move forward? And again, I don't even know all the facts that were put out there, but at the end of the day, if it's, um, fiduciary duty was what was on the, um, memo that I saw, where are the facts or what, where can we see anything that was wrong? Because that was the first question I had. Well, what'd you do wrong? So at the end of the day, I just support Sean and I support our city in doing good things that would move us forward. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next up we have Greg Cornelius.
I'm Gregory Witton Cornelius. I live at 12900 Second Street in Dickinson. I got a mailer in the mail and I was like, it's already campaigned. We just had an election. I don't understand all this, you know, and that's why we have the general elections. Show me. But we moved here because we love it. We have a six-year-old. We're trying to bring up in a wonderful city. It is a great place. And I just don't understand. I want all of us to get along. You know, that's why we have the general election. At that point, we have to deal with all this negativity. Let's move, get over with it, move on, and let's have fun. Let's do good things for the community and let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up we have William King.
William Henry King III, pastor of the Great North Baptist Church, 408 Gully Ranch Court, Dickinson, Texas. Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager, City Attorney, all who are present. It's the most wonderful time of the year. And I get on social media and discover that five individuals have signed a petition to recall the mayor of the city of Dickinson. The big city politics has come to Dickinson. Less than 25,000 people. I was embarrassed. I was ashamed that how ludicrous that these five individuals, then I began to look at the names and I saw the names of three former council members. And if any council member know that Nick Saban said, "If you're gonna listen to the folk in the bleachers, that's where you ought to be." You gonna play on this field, you gotta run by the playbook. It's important. It's extremely important to know as council members, you're not gonna always agree. You're not gonna always be on the same page, but wise men differ, fools fall out. It's important to know that all of the good things that's happening in Dickinson, the millions of dollars you're spending to build streets and drainage and prove, keeping streets clean, keeping right of ways clean, making sure drainage is taken care of, taking care of the business of the citizens of Dickinson, that a petition would be filed in the month of December. Most wonderful time of the year. And I hope and pray that the ones who are sitting at the diocese as council members are nowhere near close associated with this. It's not just blacks and whites. It's the citizens of Dickinson that says enough is enough. But there ought to be a limit. There ought to be a line drawn that you don't attack a child. You don't attack a man's wife. If I don't agree with you, I don't agree with you, but I don't have to attack your wife to tell you I don't agree with you. How weak, how low, how shameful, how embarrassing it is to see what's happening in Dickinson. I can't believe it's happening. And I see Councilman Wilson is in here tonight. He's a former council member. Yes, we're spending money in Dickinson. But thank God we got the money to spend. Improvements are being made. Advances are being made in Dickinson. We're doing the right thing. Fund balance isn't, I asked today about what was the available, uh, general fund balance. We're not broke, but the rhetoric is, we're broke. We've got millions of dollars to apply to our streets. We've got great things happening in our school district, new, developed. We've got great things happening in our school district, new development in our school district, great things are happening with our community. Homes are being built, businesses are coming to Dickinson, Dickinson is doing extremely well. And we like what's happening in Dickinson.
Sorry, your three minutes is up.
Tell me the same thing in church.
Okay. He used, he used to not be on a time limit here in the, in the chamber. He, all right, next, next up, we have John Harris.
John Harris, three seven one one Row Drift. And I took the time to put my thoughts on paper, although most of what I put down here, everyone else has already expressed, but I'll, I'll still share it with you anyway. I think it's relevant. And I'll start out by saying good evening to the mayor, city council, the employees of the city, and of course, my fellow citizens. I'm here to share my feelings about what I perceive as a very serious situation, although I think you've already heard that from most of the folks who preceded me. Benjamin Franklin is credited with saying, and I quote, "A half-truth is often a great lie." I share this because I believe that is exactly what has happened in our city. Small group of citizens, some of whom are past council members, have taken upon themselves to discredit our mayor, our duly-elected mayor, who by the way, won by over fifty-two percent of the vote in the last election. Of course, that's been stated already, it's a given. The previous administrations neglected this city to the point that it was almost criminal. Some of these same people now want the citizens to believe they have our best interest at heart. That vokes us far from the truth. I could stand here and share with you all the positive things that are happening in this city, but you all know those things already. I would rather use my time to share my opinions on why we are faced with this recall. A very small group of people who were in the past members of council and their cohorts, who tried and couldn't get elected, now want to spread half-truths. I'm ashamed of the conduct of these individuals and I would question their motives. If they in fact have a concern about the fiduciary duties of this mayor, then how will holding a recall election and possibly holding another election, mayoral election, be in the best financial interest of the citizens of Dickinson? I ask that question because I'm sure it's very expensive. I ask that question because not only do elections cost the taxpayers money, which all of us are, to conduct, conduct that election, but the time wasted focusing on elections and not on the city's business is a grievous waste of time. People have badgered this mayor, his poor wife, and sometime even his little boy. Folks, this, is this really the kind of atmosphere we want in our city? After Harvey, we were all suffering. Neighbors and friends would do just about anything to help those of us who were trying to put our lives back together, and now look what we're treated, how we're treating each other. I will close with a little different variation of what I started with. A half-truth is a whole lie. I hope my words are heated by those of us who are adult enough to conduct ourselves like adults. I've said it before and I will say it again. If you know there's a problem, then be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh. Who has Josh?
I'm gonna go off the script, because if I don't, I'll get in trouble. I'm fairly new here. Oh, Joshua, one ten Deets. I've lived in Dickinson going on three years, pretty much a newbie. I have the best neighbors. A lot of them lost a lot in Harvey, heard the stories about neighbors trapped in attics and neighbors helping other neighbors. Seems like in five short years, many people have forgotten what that means to be neighborly. This town has a small town feel, which I also like. Even though when you look at forty-five up the road, you know you're in a metropolis. Recently, it feels like we've been invaded, invaded by out-of-towners who have been bought and paid for by influential money. I could be referring to the canvassers from out of state passing around this recall petition. I could be referring to people who don't even live here with no intention other than to cause drama and cause trouble. We don't need these invaders giving Dickinson a bad name. They need to go, need to find a hobby, go on a cruise, go do something else than what they're doing now. And also, other than stalk and harass city officials. The citizens of Dickinson and those shovel makers need to let you folks up here do your jobs.
Thank you. And we have David Westmoreland.
I'm David Westmoreland, four oh nine Lookout Lane in Dickinson. And I had a whole list of things to talk about, but all these people have very eloquently said everything I want to say. But I do have to just come up with one thing, is why do we have to have not only people from Mississippi that we see on video in here wanting to gather, names on petitions, but why are people that live in the surrounding part of the city? What is their interest in trying to get rid of the mayor of Dickinson? They have never, never one time come up with a reason. And if they do have a reason, why don't they come up with a solution to the problem rather than costing us? How much money, how much money have they cost us already? You know, and it's gonna keep going on and on. But like I say, they will not come up with a solution, or they come up with gripes. You know, I mean, I, I could go on and on, I better shut up before I get up one of those things right there. But I'm gonna say I support the mayor. And I really hope the person that plans on supplying security to these out-of-towners, like he's saying, doesn't show up at my house.
All right, thank you. That's all of the public comments we have down for this evening. So we'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed after the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Uh, seven D?
Yes.
All right, so anyone else? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through C?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Councilman Simpson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman, ooh, I don't know. Give it to Councilwoman Simpson there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item seven D. Consideration and possible action to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, authorizing and approving the purchase of two new public safety vehicles and emergency equipment for Dickinson Police Department from Sillsby Ford and Sillsby Toyota through Tips USA Cooperative Contract Number twenty-one zero nine zero seven automobiles in an attempt not to exceed one hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Councilman Simpson.
I second it.
Second by Councilman Linton. Any discussion?
Yes, how long it take to get them on? Yeah, how long it take to get them on the street?
That's questionable, because we're still waiting on the vehicles we ordered last budget cycle.
Yes, sir.
Because there is a supply chain challenge. We have F-150s that are still waiting for, they're actually at the upfitter, but we're waiting for the upfitter to get those vehicles outfitted. In other words, all the emergency equipment put on them. So, we're hoping, we went with Durangos rather than the Tahoe's or rather than the Ford products, because we can get Durangos that are much quicker pace than we can get those other vehicles. So that's why the Durango switch, so we're hoping less than a year, but we're at, how long now, Captain Jacob? Because you ordered the other ones, what do we, yeah, the three trucks. About thirteen months, we ordered the ones that we're still waiting on.
Three or four trucks?
Three.
Three trucks, and we're just buying two this year?
Buying two, and it's part of the replacement.
Right.
Yep.
So there was only budgeted for two, not any more than that?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going with these because they're quicker?
No, we're going with the Durangos because we have easier access.
Get them quicker in here, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and we can get them fixed. Have we talked to Carter or we got to take them back to Sillsby for warranties?
Uh, we can actually get them, all the warranty work would be done here.
Okay.
We're just acquiring them from Sillsby.
Curious how long it take to get them on the street?
Uh, I'd like it for yesterday. We need cars badly.
And the pickup trucks, they're already in, we're just waiting on the, the equipment, like the lights and stuff like that?
Correct.
Okay.
What we're doing is we'll take the vehicles that we're taking the equipment out of, because some of that, we'll take out the cars that are going out of service and transfer the usable equipment into the, the newer cars.
Okay, that's one question.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item eight, action items for consideration. Item eight A, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, accepting an engagement letter from Brooks Watson and Company for the performance of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one audit and authorizing the mayor, city manager, or designated to execute the engagement letter. Is there a motion to approve? Motion approved by Councilman Brantley, and I'm forgetting your name for a second. Councilman Brantley, and a second by Councilman Simpson. Any discussion?
I just got a one. He mentioned that city's giving them everything they need for twenty-one. Is there anything we need from the other firm that they need, or have they got that information, or they having to start from scratch?
Some of it, they're gonna have to start from scratch. We are working with Belt Harris to get a transfer. If not, they'll have to do some twenty work to shore up the twenty numbers. But we are in contact with Belt Harris right now to try to get that information over to Brooks Watson. If they can't, then they'll just have to come in and kind of start with the, start from the very end of twenty to get that number to tie into the twenty-one.
Their contract was from what, twenty-two, thirty-four?
So what we're gonna do is twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four with one-year options after. The charter says that five years. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take that last option year and use it on the front end, basically.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of comments to make on this item and why we're having to do this. There've been some comments made recently about the audit and irresponsibility about the audit, and a few people in this room that know that when I got elected council in twenty nineteen, we sat down here in this room at a budget workshop, and everybody in the council said, "We never have an on-time audit. It never gets done properly." This city has had late audits for years. It is known, the firm that was hired by the council five years ago did a terrible job, did not deliver work product ever. And it is funny to me that now this is my fault, that a contract that some of y'all that are trying to recall me are saying I did, I failed at the audit. Let me say a little bit more on this. Aside from this, they've had, what was it, three final requests recently for these documents? Final requests that we've fulfilled over and over, and then they don't turn into work. It's to the point now, we don't even know if they will turn over all the documents. We sure hope they will, and that they don't have to start all over. When the city manager informed them that we couldn't hire them for another contract because there's a five-year cycle, he didn't quite understand that. And so his comment was, "Well, it might be misconstrued that if you don't renew our contract, that you're trying to leverage a good audit for not hiring us." That is your own auditing firm attempting to blackmail the city to, "If you don't hire us, then we will give you a bad audit."
That's a public record.
That's a public record. You can pull that email if you want to read it. That's all I have to say. Any other comments on this item?
Yeah.
Councilman Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. What was the timeline again? I know that you mentioned it during the report, but could you give it to me again for?
Yes, sir. So our, our plan is to start the, we're prepping everything now for the audit. The very end of March is when our, I have my team already scheduled to start the, the audit. And so that's when we will start the twenty, twenty-one audit. Our plan is to be able to issue that within, uh, within the, in this, or end of the spring, and then be able to issue the next one in the summer, and then the third in the fall. That would be, I think that's a feasible timeline. Without having yet dug into the details, that's a fair amount of time to be able to complete those three. Assuming, you know, just based on the support we're getting from the, from the staff here, it's number one top priority to get those caught up. So that would be the goal of that timeframe, and then that twenty-twenty-three be issued before the end of twenty-twenty-four would be the goal. So we're, we're able to roll into twenty-twenty-four's audit timeframe, just like a normal fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one other thing I was gonna say real quick for you guys is just know that probably in the, once Lewis and them are ready and have done enough background work to sit with an audit committee, because there is a charter provision for an audit committee. At that time, when he tells me he's ready to meet with an audit committee, I'm gonna put an action item here for you guys to go ahead. You know, because we had, Lewis Decker was on that audit committee, kind of informally. But I would like to get a, a formal action, a motion, second vote for, for at least three, well, not more than three, but three council members to be a part and be walked through the whole process, just like we had, had done previously, so.
All right, thank you. Councilman Thompson, did you have a?
No, I'm turning it back.
I saw your light, come on. Okay.
For the vote.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight B, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, approving an expenditure of funds by the Dickinson Economic Development Corporation for the downtown picnic grounds project. Is there a motion to approve? Move to approve?
I'm gonna give that one to Jesse, because it seems appropriate.
A motion approved by Councilman Brantley, second by Councilman Simpson. Discussion?
If I can just kind of tee it up a little bit, and then I'll probably hand a baton to Councilmember Brantley. Uh, for years, at least from the history, as I've found, is that we've, we've been in, you know, when I say we, understand the collective we of, you know, the city of Dickinson and all of its ancillary governing bodies. We've been in possession of, of about a three-acre parcel of property right on State Highway three. Prime property, right across the street from City Hall, that's, you know, been a pretty good place if you wanted to, you know, pasture some, some livestock. Would've been good for that for the last thirty years. The EDC is currently working on with, how do you have places for the community to meet? Places so that people can gather. I challenge anyone to find places. If you don't have your own communal hall, maybe the churches are lucky enough. But the city of Dickinson, you know, will put a hundred, hundred, you know, twenty employees sitting at tables for Thanksgiving luncheons, you know, that doesn't work. Other organizations look for that meeting place. Where do you meet for things? Where do you have festivals and, and places for people to mingle and meet and have a sense of community? So, I was very interested in, in kind of a concept that, that Councilmember Brantley kind of, you know, pitched to me and, and really, you know, worked really hard on, you know, we walked hand-in-hand through this project. Because what I think you'll see here today is, you know, you know, when you tie it into the fact that the downtown really doesn't have an identity, there's not a, is there a sense of place? I think what you'll see in this conversation is a sense of place for a three-acre piece of property that has sat fallow for a long time that, that, that could be activated so that the surrounding properties can, can, can grow and, and to be part of a vibrant change of character for the downtown. So, with that, I'd like to maybe, Jesse, would you like to kind of maybe lead us the way a little bit, for a little bit?
Sure, the, the thought behind this facility was, and, and, you know, we've talked about it for several years, that Dickinson needed a gathering place, and it, it came out very evident in our economic development strategic planning that, you know, we needed a centralized location for folks to gather in Dickinson. We've, you know, we've talked about different iterations. You know, I, I met with a lot of folks and talked to them about what their thoughts might be for this facility. I, but really, it's a, it's a place for folks to come together. The food truck area, you know, permanent spots for food trucks, water and, and power provided to those food trucks, a vendor market area, and then a pavilion area for gatherings, both public and private gatherings. So, I think there's still some, you know, some details to work out as far as how we're gonna handle the operation of the facility. But that kind of falls back into your court and staff's court, into how to make that work. But I do think it's, it's an exciting opportunity. It does include a park space for folks to gather. The, the, the pavilion or the facility itself is large enough to hu, to host. the pavilion or the facility itself, um, is large enough to hu- to host, uh, any of our Dickinson organizations. I met with the Education Foundation. We wanted to make sure that we-
Do you have any pictures? Uh, did Anna, do you have any of the?
Yeah, there's some pictures in the slides.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that we did. I just want to make sure. You're, you're so eloquent. We don't even need pictures. I can see it in my brain.
Right.
It's coming up too, by the way.
I did pitch the picnic grounds as a, as a name for the facility because, um, if you go back all the way to the beginning, uh, that's kind of, Dickinson was a stopping off point between Galveston and Houston. Um, and there was some property donated to create the original Dickinson picnic grounds. Um, and it was a gathering place for people to come. Uh, and that's, uh, so kind of harkening back to our history and, and kind of where we came from, uh, is where I came up with the Dickens and grounds project, or, or digging into grounds, picnic grounds name. Uh, it's not quite big enough for a horse track, but that would be really cool. Uh, so, um, but that's really where we, uh, what we've, what we've kind of come up with. And I think it's, uh, it's an excellent project. And I think it's something that, uh, all of Dickinson can come together and, and, uh, kind of celebrate, um, and, and something to, to bring everybody together.
Yeah. So, you know, one of the things I do want to bring up, you know, because it was brought up at the EDC and want to, uh, kind of bring attention to for the council. EDC members requested that, uh, you know, not, you know, a drill down, spend, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars to tell you how to fix a five-thousand-dollar problem, you know, one of those type of things. This is, this was a, a, you know, worked with EDO IQ. Cortland worked with them to kind of, you know, set the parameters of, you know, what, what's the value of a project like this to, to the city that you're gonna see. Some of the things, uh, in a summary of economic and, and fiscal impact, um, just with some basic ideas, you know, you're looking at, you know, a ten-year, uh, impact somewhere in a neighborhood of, you know, on, on venue revenue itself, probably around one-point-four million dollars for general revenue itself to rent out the pavilion if we, you know, work with, uh, work on making it at market rate, you know, and so over that ten-year period, about one-point-four million. But really, you know, a lot of these economic development, you know, deals, not just economic development, but community development is a spinoff, the indirect, the things that you do by bringing something like that to this community. What does that do whenever you bring those people together and then they leave and they're still pretty hungry? Because, you know, most of the time festival food is not the best and, and sometimes you hold out and so you can go to a restaurant locally in town, right? So you want to go around. What does, what is that impact to a community? And so really, you know, what you're really looking for is, is that, uh, the total spending. Um, so, you know, the belief is, is that, you know, EDO IQ is some very basic information, about eleven million dollars would be spent around the city by people just off of some ver- and these are some, you know, relatively conservative estimates of if you bring people to town from out of town or even in town, you got them out of the house. Now they need to eat. Now, hey, I'm already out. I'm gonna go to a boutique shop that's right down the street. Someone sees that we're regularly doing festivals in downtown. Well, maybe they'll open a business so they can take advantage of the fact that four to six times a year, they have the big influx and the smaller things on the weekend as well. So, um, that's kind of an economic impact, you know, analysis, very, very simplistic. You know, the truth be told is, is that the, the numbers are relatively low because we, you know, don't want to oversell a project and say that it's gonna generate, you know, you know, all of a sudden, you know, it'd be a quarter billion dollars and all of a sudden you'll be, you'll be a hub of, you know, South Houston. And, you know, that's not what that's meant. And really it's for, what you'll see is that it's not really sized for it to be a huge draw. You know, some people will come from out of town and some people will come regionally, but really the goal is, is to have that space that is, you know, is quaint, welcoming, really has a lot of Dickinson as a character in it. But, and, and those economic impacts are relatively conservative considering those things. So, um, you know, a, the fiscal impact analysis is, it has a, there's a breakout, uh, there's food trucks that kind of factor into the, uh, to some of this, uh, generation of revenue on site, not for the, not for the city organization, but them, how much money would they make and, and how much, you know, food could they sell from a food truck? A lot of times these food trucks are a great opportunity to be an incubator. People who want to test the market, find out, will Dickinson like my food? Will they support a good business? Oh, they do. Maybe I'll move into a brick and mortar building nearby. It is truly an incubator for, and, and, and is a low-cost way for people to get into a market to see if, if, if they can survive in that market without spending a quarter million dollars for a building and getting all the permits necessary for a building and getting your elevation certificates. Buy a truck, still expensive. But the way to get out of it is a lot easier. And so they can find out and test Dickinson's market. It is an unproven market for many markets. So really great opportunity. I think it's a pretty, pretty outstanding, uh, opportunity. Jess, is there anything you want to carry on? Do we have, uh, do we have slides for? I thought we had to. Is it? Okay. I was hoping we could pull something. Can you pull? I like, well, I didn't know we were gonna have so many people in the, they're here, we might as well entertain them a little bit. We've got some good people here, you know? If you don't mind, while they're doing that, uh, Jesse, would you, uh, can you kind of walk us through the process you got to the, because I mean, the EDC got, you know, has been a heavier part. Would you kind of walk us through a little bit of, I guess, the process of, you know, how did it go from idea to, to this moment right here?
Yeah, um, I guess, uh, well, we originally, uh, started talking about this, gosh, um, almost a year ago, maybe a little bit more. Uh, well, the, the concept, the idea behind this has really been talked about in Dickinson for several years. Um, but, uh, you know, kind of bring it to fruition. Uh, we met with, uh, you know, the EDC met and discussed it. Um, was pretty much, uh, I would say unanimously, uh, supported. Um, there were some members that, again, asked for the economic impact statement, which we were able to, uh, get EDO IQ to help us with. Um, so.
Leave it there, please, Anna, and I'll walk you through.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
No, I mean, go ahead. Keep going.
Honey, you're, you're good. You're good. That's a good point.
Okay.
I just want to start here. And so for those of you that may not be as aware of the location, you're, we're talking about this kind of three-acre property. It used to be a school administration building. Um, if you go back into the, the Google Earth, like, uh, we kind of do on every Monday morning, you know, you kind of get to see some history here and check some things out at City Hall. Um, so there's a major, you know, the larger piece of property owned by the Dickinson Economic Development Corporation, um, uh, has no requirement for any type of educational, uh, you know, component. So that kind of is a wide open opportunity for us to kind of do whatever, you know, uh, the, the EDC sees fit. Um, on the smaller triangular piece on, uh, down a little bit, uh, it's owned by the city of Dickinson. This was kind of one of those things where it kind of passed between the school to the county, to each one of these entities. And yeah, I won't bore you with all that. But what is important about this triangle is as of right now, there is a restriction for, uh, for education being, uh, being a component to, to being able to use this property. So the goal is, is obviously, you know, there, you know, one component of education is physical education as well as being able to talk about some of the history of Dickinson along the way. So trying to merge those two things together. Um, putting good fencing up that, uh, and being able to, you know, make sure that kids, even though they're close to a highway, that they are actually very safe from, from the traffic. So what, you know, the goal is, is that, you know, how do you leverage those two together? And I think if we go to some future pages here, let's see what we got coming up here. Let's keep going here. So if you want to stop here, so, so, you know, the idea of what the look is being inspired by, this is not what it looks like, but this is the inspirations, kind of farmhouse. If it was the picnic grounds, it being the fact that those were horse races, those horses had to be stabled somewhere and things of that nature. How do you keep that motif going? And also putting in, you know, a park space as well. So, um, you know, the goal would be, if you scroll down just a little bit, you know, the, uh, weekly events, civic organizations wanting to sponsor events and being able to, to host events, you know, of course, private events, weddings, other, uh, celebrations. Uh, the goal that the city has long-term is how, how do you do quarterly events when you have nowhere to really stage it in and not be awkward? Uh, you know, we do a lot of things at City Hall, but, you know, it's kind of hard whenever you're like putting vendors in a parking lot with no other parking. So it eats up all that space. Uh, so if you want to keep scrolling, please. The main goal here is to have about a twenty-four-hundred to three-thousand-six-hundred square foot pavilion. Um, it also has an overhang to, that kind of doubles that space size to seven-thousand-two-hundred square feet. So you'd have thirty-six-hundred under roof and climate control with the seventy-two-hundred being able to be climate controlled, but it requires you to put some, some bear, uh, climate barriers in place. Uh, the goal would be to have a walking trail around. So it's about, how many laps around it makes a mile, Jesse?
Uh, just, just over four.
Yeah. So you have four and some change, and you can do a mile walk circuit around the property. Uh, permanent food trucks, uh, leased spaces, eight of them, which would have water and electric available that, that these food trucks could, you know, lease from the city, you know, a space either daily, weekly, monthly. We'll work through all of that. Um, also a vendor market area where electricity would be available for them that would rent out those spaces. The playground and green space as, as, as explained, uh, the goal would be to put some permanent public restroom. So unless it's being rented out for private events, these areas would be public. Um, that is one deterrent to people walking and jogging around our city. Uh, one is not having as much sidewalks. If you've seen five-seventeen and State Highway three, we've been adding sidewalks. Uh, and, and state, uh, Texas, that's been, uh, been gracious to be a part of that, extending from State Highway three all the way down. Our next goal is to try to start going up State Highway three and, and continue that major backbone. Um, but if you're out jogging and so forth, not having a place to stop, or if you're just walking and enjoying the day, uh, having those restrooms would be huge. A ticketing area, uh, and also a permanent stage area for live acts. And so it'd all be available right there. Um, proposed cost, uh, this is kind of an all-in using a cooperative purchasing agreement, a TIPS contract. Um, this includes all of the engineering required, all of the, uh, prep work, building, architectural, things of that nature. You're looking at, uh, with, with, uh, contingency and so forth, kind of built into this, you're looking at about two-point-oh-seven million dollars for, uh, the EDC. You want to go down? Let's do some. Ooh, that's kind of sideways, ain't it? That would, oh, wow. All right. Who, man. So this kind of gives you, I don't know, do you want to walk through this a little bit, Jesse? You, you're, you're?
Go ahead. You're doing great.
Oh, really? I don't know if they agree with that, but okay. Um, so what you're seeing here, if what you, you know, if you kind of look at this, um, this is kind of looking from State Highway three. The green space that's kind of green right here is actually would be the park area. And then what that's overlooking is your vendor row for markets. If you look to the left side there, you're looking at, uh, at the food truck alley. Now, this is not necessarily the scale. This would have eight spaces. I know we're showing four, but that's just to kind of show you the concept. As you can see, the three-thousand-six-hundred square foot pavilion, the permanent bandstand there. So why don't we go to the next one here? This is kind of the overlay of the whole thing, kind of looking at it from, for those of you, uh, getting some breakfast at Rogers, this would be your view, looking, overlooking this property. Uh, we're putting in some sawtooth parking all the way around the property. Uh, that, that increases parking, not just for this facility. If you're talking about like things that this does, that has absolutely nothing to do with just the events, this event area itself, there's no parking in downtown. If we're gonna be bringing businesses in, which the EDC just a couple of months ago approved a grant to bring in backyard brewing. Uh, they are going to have a brewery and restaurant. It's the old Illinois building, that green building next to, right across from Rogers. Um, they are going to be, their play, anticipated ribbon cutting is going to be October of twenty-twenty-four. They have limited parking. They could utilize this during times that there aren't events and things of that nature. So it's how it kind of bleeds over, uh, to other areas. So why don't we keep going now there? So, of course, this is kind of, as you can see, the motif kind of has that barnyard look to it a little bit. Um, nothing too, you know, ultra-modern, you know, those straight lines and lots of glass just wouldn't fit in in Dickinson, because that's not who we are. So if we want to go down a little bit more. So this is a little closer view of that pavilion. As you can see, um, large building. Uh, but what's important is those overhangs almost double or basically double the under-roof capacity for, for those times, especially if you have no need for the climate control, it would be real easy to utilize the whole space. So if you want to scroll down. Another view of that. There's the bandstand, uh, right there. Um, let's see what else we got going on here. All right. And this right here is your ticket area concession storage area. So, you know, kind of having those permanent structures in place, so you're not renting them, so you're not having to have, uh, volunteers out in the cold. Kind of hard to get volunteers if you put them in bad weather, you know, it's usually a good way to have them not come back for the next year. So these are great ways of doing this. I, I turn it back over to you, Jesse, and just let you polish off and.
No, I think you, I think you did a good job. A couple of things to note, the walking trail, the sawtooth parking, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, parking all the way around, putting the, the drainage, uh, including, or, uh, covering the drainage ditches, putting sauce, the sawtooth parking all the way around. Um, the ticketing facility also has a, uh, it has a concession area in it, but it's more of a, uh, uh, an area that will have a, it's not a commercial kitchen, but there's prep areas for caterers that are doing larger events, uh, can do so in that area. Um, so the, uh, uh, as mentioned, the building can be enclosed, uh, to house, you know, some of our larger galas that we have could be housed at this, at this facility, uh, fairly easily. So, um, you know, really, I, I want to stress that the, the, you know, the, the concept, the idea behind it was something that we can regularly gather, you know? We want to be able to bring folks into Dickinson, you know, a couple of days a week, three days a week, you know, have somewhere for folks to come. And then it can be expanded if we want to do larger events. The little Italy, the little Italy festival, other festivals like that, to have much larger events that this would be able to house. So.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, you know, I think we sized the pavilion specifically to ensure that if the Dickinson ISD gala wants to be in Dickinson, it can actually be housed in Dickinson instead of Texas City. So if it's their choice, if they want to, you know, be a part of it, it's big enough. So, be, that was a big part of our sizing.
Yep.
Okay, we have questions or comments on this item?
I got a couple.
Councilman Townsend.
On page three. Try to make them easy, because I just seen this before we sit down. Uh, the spending, you talk about parking. Are we gonna charge for parking or what are they talking about in that parentheses? Second, the first bullet at the bottom page. Ticket sales, food, beverage, merchandise, parking, et cetera, under spending. Is that for making money or?
Um, the parking, it just kind of gives you, are you, when you say page three, are you talking about the, uh, the economic impact? Yeah. Uh, no, I mean, that was just like, it, it does not factor in, we're not gonna be having paid parking. Um, what it is, is just basically kind of saying all encompassing, you know, they kind of just took into account all of the things that you could, you know, be, uh, you know, charging for, but the, this is on a public street and I don't see how we could safely like cut off those streets to actually like do that.
I was, I was thought it was talking about, I meant, was it talking about the parking lot, not the streets?
No, I mean, uh, there's, uh, well, the parking is gonna be sawtooth wrapped around the street. So you'd have it to make something private like that, you would have to close the streets off. So I, we do not anticipate like having parking charges because we're not, I don't see the city council closing a street to have that type of control.
Yeah, just the, the way I looked at the pictures, the parking was actually inside the property, not on the street.
Well, it's, it's, it's gonna be over the, uh, ditches. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna be putting underground, uh, drainage in place, and then the sawtooth will be going over the ditch area.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And in the, uh, next page, under the physical impacts, we get taxes off of the sales at the farmer's market and things like that, food trucks.
Well, we, yeah. So one of the things that kind of, what this does is it allows us to do something that a lot, you know, a lot of the, the, the battle we're fighting with a lot of these vendors, like you'll see a food truck, you know, just pop up somewhere. You know, they'll just pop up one day. May- maybe if we're lucky, they'll have gotten a permit. Um, but what's good about this scenario is, is that if they're gonna be housed and they're gonna be renting a space here, then we would put a protocol in place that the expectation is and that we would be getting sales tax certificates as part of them being able to lease the space. So what does that do? Any sales that they do, uh, on-site, there, they, that would be coming back to the city of Dickinson, because that would be part of their lease agreement and that we would be having staff check that as it's being rented out, those spaces, even, even on a day, uh, weekly, monthly, however we do that, we want, we want that, uh, as part of the agreement. And if they don't abide by, then they don't come back. I think it's just very simple. If they're not paying into the local economy, they don't get to come back.
I didn't know if we collect the sales tax off of it like that or not. Just a question.
We are supposed to, and this makes it a very controlled way to ensure that we're, that, that, that those certificates are being, uh, applied for inside of this, you know, inside of the city limits of Dickinson and that, that, those proceeds come back to the city.
All right. And then, of course, I got bombarded last night. That's what happens when you leave the house. All right. And then, of course, I got bombarded last night. That's what happens when you leave the house. Um. Their question had to do with. I mean, the, the food truck concept is everywhere, but they were concerned about, and this wasn't a business owner. They were concerned about how it affects the brick and mortar buildings because they can bring their trailer in today, hook up and leave. And they don't have to pay property tax and follow all the building codes and all that stuff. So if you can address that for their, if they're listening, they can hear your answer on that, please.
Well, lucky, you know, there is, there are some, uh, there, there's a reason why the food truck industry exists, right? I mean, it, it's allowed them to kind of come up with some ways to get. But that would be an argument to not allow any food truck in the state of Texas because of the property tax regime of the state of Texas. So I mean, I guess by that argument, no food truck should be allowed to operate in the state of Texas. Part two of that would be to say is that actually I think that what happens is, have you ever noticed that whenever you go down, most of the time, not all the time. But oftentimes if there's a McDonald's, there's a Burger King next to it, which is next to a Taco Bell, which is next to a KFC, which is by a Sonic. In every city. And Dickinson, you know, the, I guess the, the reason why you see that is because one of those companies usually like, let's, let's use an example for say pharmacies for that. Why is, why does CVS like to, if they can, get next to a Walgreens? Because Walgreens spends all of the advertising dollars and CVS spends way less. So their goal is they're trying to get the spillover business. The goal here is in the city is that we have so little in food service. That the EDC hasn't, has an economic impact study by Nava Retail showing that two hundred and thirty million dollars a year. Is spent outside of the city limits by people that live inside of the city limits just on restaurants. So if we have more enticing options in the city and people feel like they have a lot of choice in town. There's a lot of revenue to capture in town. Um, I don't believe, I don't get me wrong. Is there a competitive advantage that, that, hey, you know, this doesn't work out, I can go hook my truck up and I'll go to, you know, Algoa or something, you know? You know, good luck there. But my point being is, uh, is yes, there is a competitive advantage. I'm not going to sit there and say, oh, you know, they don't have some advantage. But there are some disadvantages too. Food trucks that move around a lot usually are the ones that have trouble keeping clientele and have those regulars because they have to check Facebook to see where they at this week. Um, and another thing too, um, is the goal would be for that food truck vendor, not saying that it would happen. But the goal is, is to give opportunities so that people who would never stop in Dickinson to try out their concept would try it out, stay around for a while. We get to know them and we would be hawking our wares as to how we could get you into a brick and mortar building so that you can no longer have that competitive advantage, you know, whatever is perceived. Um, those would be how I would answer. I'm not saying that they'd be happy with those answers, but that'd be kind of how I'd be, you know, explaining that really it's not about. Getting a bigger slice of the pies. How do you grow the pie for everybody? And then everyone gets a bigger piece in this scenario. That, that's what the goal is.
Well, my reason for asking is your answer would be better than my answer. So.
That's not necessarily true.
The answer, because the first thing they say is, well, the councilman said this, you know, if I says something wrong compared to what the city goal was. I don't want, I, I wouldn't want to be the one doing that. That's why I asked the question.
Well, I appreciate it, sir. And I can assure you that, uh, if we need a translator, I am from, uh, Louisiana. So if we need any translation services, you know, we can, we can get that for us.
We understand that.
Are there, are there other questions or comments on this? Councilman Linton?
Uh, yeah, since, um, since I was elected to city council, one of the items at the top of my want list, not my need list, but the wants list has been the parks. I've said it several times and I've, you know, we've had multiple meetings over it. Um, because I was, uh, thinking that if I can get anything done, I would like to have a space where the citizens of the community, everyone equally can go out. And gather and do whatever, you know, have festivals and events. We could have a venue we could rent out. But I was thinking more in the context of having it in a city park on the bayou. Uh, what I was visualizing was one day, city of Dickinson is going to have a fireworks display over the bayou at their own city park, not one owned by the county. Um, and so, um, so anyway, but this is, uh, kind of a, a variation on that. Uh, it also, uh, you know, benefits the downtown area, uh, provides kind of a, um, uh, a soul. Uh, or compass at least directing it towards a soul at some point, uh, cooperation with the local businesses. Like you said, the brewery is going to be coming into that area. Um, also it's be, it's utilizing this property that has been sitting there for a long time, unutilized. Um, and as far as, um, the event, the last two things, uh, the event venue itself. So everybody, well, most people know I'm a musician, so I've played at probably every city owned event venue in this whole area, including the city of Houston and outside. Uh, the Houston metropolitan area. So I've seen all types of variations, um, on with city parks or huge event venue that the city's paid for. And of course it varies based on, um, the amount of money that the city is able to invest on that structure. But I think this is a, a good idea from what I've seen so far. I like the, uh, diagonal parking where the, uh, venues in the area are able to share it. Uh, the fence that, uh, you know, kind of, uh, excludes the, that area if it's rented as an event, uh, facility. Uh, is not excluding the parking on the outside. Um, you have a stage there. Um, of course, if I ever perform there, it'll be for free as usual. Um, but, uh, but it is a good idea. Also the location. Uh, it is, uh, facing east and, uh, that's always been a problem. Some of the event venues in the area, they put their stage facing west. And most of those, uh, events are going to be happening late in the day and the sun is, you know, provide, you know, causes problems. Uh, but it looks like a, uh, it's a great idea. Um, you know, I'll look at it a little bit more. I, you know, I just got this handout, this version or this information related to this issue, uh, tonight when I showed up. So I'll, uh, I've already read through it, but I'm going to read it a little bit more in depth. Last, uh, thing I would say is, uh, it all comes down to cost. So where's the money coming from? And I see that the proposed cost for the entire venue, uh, or the facility, uh, building, electrical, crust granite, all that, you know, all the, uh, materials. And is going to come up to about two million dollars.
So this is a, an EDC project being fully funded by the Economic Development Corporation has been passed, uh, believe unanimously by the EDC board and is waiting for approval from council.
Okay. And so they're not going to need any funds from the city. We're not going to need any city funds to us. Okay. Um, yeah, it sounds like a good idea for all sorts of events, farmers markets, uh, festivals, uh, you know, uh, the, um, uh, arts and crafts events that occur around the area. Uh, I think it's an excellent idea. And then also, uh, even when the facility is not being rented out, uh, local families have a place to go out there and celebrate a family birthday party at the very least. But anyway, I just wanted to mention those things.
All right. Are there other comments or questions?
To go with, uh, Councilman Linton's question, please. Uh, the financing, we borrowing the money or they got the money to build it?
No, they're going to be, uh, we have specific, that's going to be specifically coming out of fund balance. Any of the land acquisitions of the city, uh, excuse me, the EDC. Is doing is going to be where we'll be drawing from line of credit, but this is the balance, this is from the fund balance itself.
The EDC fund balance.
Right, yes. And the, uh, we still, even by voting on this, we don't even know what we're buying. We don't know which building they're going with. It's not what we're being shown, correct?
Uh, no, at least it, you know, it's a thirty six hundred square foot. I mean, what you're looking at, yes.
Yeah, it's the buildings up here. That's what it's going to look like. I thought you said we hadn't decided on its look yet.
No, no, that's, that's the, that's the concept of the building.
Okay.
Are there other questions or comments? Uh, Councilman Lynn?
One last thing, I just wanted to reiterate what Councilman Townsend said about the food trucks and impact to local businesses, local restaurants. We just need to be very careful about that. That's all I was going to say.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With Councilman Townsend voting no. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item eight, that was eight C. Consideration and possible action on the approval of the, of change order number six for West Gumbay drainage improvements project from the Texas General Land Office, GLO.
Your motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilman Simpson. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Schick. Any discussion?
Money again, like the last one?
This one here is the final closeout. They have done kind of all the accounting, you know, looked at all of the invoicing and so forth. And so this is them doing the final closeout so we can submit it to GLO and say that this project is done.
They've just made sure this number equal that number like the last one y'all brought in?
Yes, sir. So this one, this one here is dealing with, there was just a minor about two hundred dollar adjustment that they found kind of at the last minute. And when I say they, it's our, our grant administrator said, oh, there's this one two hundred and whatever dollar change. So.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Let's take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, i- item nine, executive close session, item nine A. Section five five one point zero seven two deliberation regarding real property, discussion and deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. Nine B, section five five one point zero seven four personnel matter, discussion and deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a city attorney. We will convene into executive session at 8:01 PM.
You
We will reconvene from executive session at 9:42 PM. Item 10, action items from executive session. 10A, consideration of possible action concerning matters discussed in executive session.
I move to confirm the appointment of Nim.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. He said 9A.
No, 10A.
Did you?
10A.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I move to confirm the appointment of Nim Dome as an in-house city attorney. The mayor's appointment of Nim Dome.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Right, second by Councilman Schick. Is there any discussion? Welcome aboard, sir, hopefully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
With Councilman Townsend voting no, the motion carries. We want to item 11, adjournment.
The motion.
Second motion by Councilman, um, who, Townsend, and second by Councilman Simpson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We adjourned at 9:43 PM.